We call ever July 10th meeting to order this time. We do have a quorum seven of seven. And shall we stand for invocation and the pledge of allegiance?
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the blessings that you've bestowed us. We ask you to continue to bless those who are here, those who are traveling, and also those who are watching us virtually. We thank you for each person who is here for their public comments and for also for being here participating in their local government. We ask that you continue to bless our county and we ask that this board follow through in the Lord's will. And we ask for those, for special prayers for those who are sick and shut in and those who are in poor health. And it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Shall the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first thing I had agenda to approve that we worked agenda for tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion by supervisor Miles, second by supervisor Allen, that we would approve the agenda as amended. Are there any questions? All in favor? Seven yes. The minutes. Motion by supervisor Matthew, second by supervisor Gilliam, that we would approve the minutes. Are there any questions? All in favor? Seven yes. All right. The next be the approval of our claims.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we approve the claims as presented with the additional claim that has been distributed, sir.
Motion by supervisor Miles, second by supervisor Brad, that we approve the claims with the additional claim that was presented. Ready to vote? Yes. The announcements, are there any announcements at this time? Our presentation, we don't have a, we have one but postponed to next month from Mr. Dwight Christian. Next is public comments. How many do we have signed up, Ms.?
We have ten.
Ten.
First one is Eddie Slagle, District Two.
Mr. Slagle.
And Maggie Snotty will be next.
Mr. Chairman, elected representatives, my name is Eddie Slagle. I reside at 2331 Back Mountain Road, Dilwin, Virginia, 23936. First of all, I've got two attaboys. One for PDOT because when I was here last time, I had mentioned about Back Mountain Road being so bad. I think it was two days later, they were out marking the road, and I believe it was probably less than a week, they were already out doing some resurfacing. So I'd like to thank Scott for all of his hard work out there because it's, it shows and it's appreciated. And the second one, and I know we don't have a rep here from Dominion Energy, but we've had a couple of really bad storms lately. And due to the severity of the storms, I feel like they got the power back up and going in record time. I don't know if they've hired more people or what they've done, but I don't know if this board can pass that on to Dominion. But, excuse me, sir, but they really, really did an excellent job by getting things back up and going. The other things, last time I was here, I was talking about the money on the land deal. I know it was recorded in the transfers, $751,680, but the payback was 360 some thousand plus the other $170,000 taxpayer money. But I was, dollars and cents, if it was recorded at over 700,000 and we only paid back 300 and some thousand, you know, it's just been some talk out there about, you know, what's the difference in the money, you know, when it came to that. And I haven't really been getting, been able to get a good answer out of that. The other thing was, that I brought up last time, was I understand, and this is strictly neighborhood scuttlebutt, and I know how that goes, but there's an illegal slaughterhouse operating on Syrah Road. And the reason it's a concern to me is, first of all, I'm a joint property owner. And the second thing is several areas on that property actually drain onto my property, go into the creek, go down to the main creek, and then go on down past Brenda Malcolm's house, down through that down to the bottom. So it's, could be a drainage issue. And I didn't know if the board, I understand something came up in the planning commission, and I'm sorry I missed that. I don't know what was going on. I hate to miss them, but, I did. But I didn't know if the board could shed some light on that as to what's going on, because I'm sure y'all probably know what's going on, or if Ms. Edmondson could at least share some information to the public here tonight on what's going on with that, because I understand it's a violation's going on and, thank you, sir.
It's been addressed, I think D and Q is involved in it, Ms. Edmond?
The Department, Virginia Department of Agriculture, yes, sir.
Agriculture. So it being taken care of?
I mean, the problem been addressed. I don't have enough time, but are they, are they doing it, still operating over there, or have they shut down the operation?
I don't. He indicated at our meeting on June 26th with the planning commission that he would not be operating. He was aware that he was operating in violation of his zoning ordinance. He has multiple violations with the Virginia Department of Agriculture, the Health Department, and D and Q have been made aware of the situation.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Maggie Snotty, District Five, and Linda Morales will be next.
Good evening. I'm Maggie Snotty. I live at 194 Mountain View Road, and I'm in the Glenmore District. And I'm here tonight to once again talk trash with you guys. And this is a topic I am very passionate about. I'm also here on behalf of my teammates, the Buckingham Anti-Litter Task Force, also known as the BATF. The last time I was here, Chairman Chambers gave me a personal challenge to clean up Route 20. And I am here tonight, and I'm happy to tell you that with the help of Brother George and about a dozen seminarians from St. Thomas Aquinas Seminary, we started at the Slate River Bridge, worked our way down 20 towards Food Lion, and in just two hours, we collected 43 bags of trash. The BATF recently finished up our fourth semi-annual road cleanup in May, and we want to give you an update, not only on what we've been doing, but our plans for the future. We had 96 people participating, 13 teams, and we collected a record 282 bags of trash. I want to make two points tonight. Number one, we need more people to get involved. This is not an isolated problem. You can drive any road in Buckingham, and the trash and the litter is disgusting. So I appeal to everyone in this room to get on board, volunteer to be part of our team, see me after this meeting, give me a call. There's so much people can do just in their own yard and on their own road. And this can be a fun exercise, it can be a team building exercise, it's a teachable moment. There's all kinds of things we can do. Number two, the BATF has committed to stop this trash on the front end. This is the year we're going to start doing it. There are six actions that have been proven to be effective in eliminating roadside trash. I'm here tonight to discuss one of them. I have more to share with you on the others at a later date. Our initial program will be to launch a program in the fall with the schools. We are hoping to roll this out from kindergarten through 12th grade with age appropriate activities. There's literature and training modules available, which we will be reviewing. There's also grant money available, so we hope to make this not only educational, but also fun for the kids with some nice prizes and recognition that they can earn. And three minutes is just not enough time for me to talk about trash. But thank you. I'll be back. I'll give you more updates in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Linda Morales, District Two, and Bruce Grazer will be next.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Linda Morales. I live at 1808 Cairo Road in Cumberland, Virginia. I live at 1808 Cairo Road in Cumberland, Virginia. I'm here because of something that happened last November. Seven years ago, I bought five acres of land here in Buckingham County for one reason. Twenty-two veterans a day commit suicide. As an Air Force-disabled veteran, I am determined to create a Veterans Training Center here in Virginia, similar to the one that I had to travel to Colorado to attend. So, two years ago, I moved into the county, and I decided that I was going to jump in full force into this county and be a productive citizen. I am also one of the sixteen percent of the county residents with no income. I have no money. I make no money. I made fifteen hundred dollars last year. So, I can live on that kind of money. I am... So, I'm sorry. So I worked as a voting official last year, last November, and because I am considered a county employee as a voting official, I was required to submit a direct deposit form. Being that I have no income, I have no bank account, I have no reason for a bank account, and I felt that Buckingham County was putting an undue burden upon me to get one for a hundred and ten dollars. At best, I am a gig person here in Buckingham. I have two more years on my appointment as a voting officer. I want to work the elections. I've already been told that I will not be paid this November. I have made my availability readily known. I am also asking, so is what I am here to ask, is if there could be some sort of an adaption, change to the county requirements for a direct deposit? I feel completely disenfranchised, as a poor person, that I couldn't get paid for services I rendered from this county. And it shouldn't be that way. You shouldn't be putting poor people as a second thought. There was zero attempt to work with me on this. I was told flat out that that was our policy, nothing can change. And I believe that it can change. I think it's not that hard to get voting officials paid. Considering that this county has been in the news for all of the election issues, I would hope that you would want experienced voting officers back this November, because there's no shenanigans at my voting place. And so, thank you very much. That's all I have to say. Oh, I do have a gift from my farm to all of you. I don't know if I'm allowed to give it to you, but afterwards, I'm happy to do so. They're gift bags, they all have my business card on it, so anyone can talk to me about it afterwards, and what I'm trying to do for the county. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Bruce Grazer, District Six, and Joyce Booker will be next.
Bruce Grazer, I'm District Six. Mr. Chambers, I live at 123 Beaver Place. I just had a comment about the bridge that we live at, I've already spoke to the VDOT gentleman just a few minutes ago. It's concerning the bridge. It's, there's one way in and one way out. I moved here in March of 2008. That area back there, there was absolutely no homes back in there now. If you ever drive back in there now, it is slam-packed, full of beautiful homes back in there. And if that bridge were to ever go out, I don't know how we would get in, and I don't know how we would get out. So, that's the comment that I had, and it's, only one car can go in, and one car, there are two of them are not going over that rickety old bridge. So that's the comment that I had, and so, that's all, that's all I have. I'm not going to take three minutes, I took forty-five seconds, so, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Joyce Booker, District Two, and she's also representing NACP. And then Marie Flowers will be next.
Good evening, supervisors. My name is Joyce Gregory Booker. I reside at 235 Evans Smith Road in Dillon, Virginia, District Two, and I am a member of Buckingham Branch and NACP, and authorized to speak on behalf of the local branch. Mr. Chairman, I am requesting five-minute public comment time to speak on behalf of the Buckingham Branch. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
The mission of the NWACP is to achieve equality, political rights, and social inclusion by advancing policies and practice that expand human and civil rights, eliminate discrimination, and accelerate the well-being, education, and economical security of Black people of all persons of color. It seems like equality, political rights, and social inclusion are at risk here in Buckingham County. Our local branch has a long history of voter registration, voter education, and encouraging everyone to get out to vote. In my time, people have been arrested, beaten, and even killed for equal opportunity and for the right to vote. As people of color, we now have the right to vote and voice our opinion. The Buckingham Branch NWACP is very concerned about the lack of transparency within the electoral system in this county. In the beginning, the registered position was not widely advertised and had a very short application period. The position was on the register's website, but not on the county's website. We had three, three African-American young ladies to apply, but their application was never acknowledged, nor were they interviewed for the position. Louis Garcia was hired as registered. Next, they were told to resubmit their application due to the fact that Louis Garcia, Director of Elections, General Registered, was terminated by the Electoral Board on May 9, 2023. All three ladies resubmitted their application. On May 12, 2023, the Electoral Board had a meeting. The Chairwoman announced that Ginger Casilla, Deputy Registered, was selected as the interim General Registered Director of Elections to fill the unexpired term, which ended June 30, 2023. The announcement was made that the posting of the permanent registered position will be locally posted as soon as possible. Therefore, once again, all three ladies qualified African-American applied. Advocates who applied for position, and they did not receive an interview. They did receive an email stating that their application, cover letter, and resume were received, and thank you for your interest in the position. Best regards. Best regards. Is this the best that the register office could offer? Their application didn't qualify them for an interview? I wonder, did anyone ever look at the application? If so, who? Did anyone get an interview at all? We know that the three African-American young ladies did not get an interview. We know that they never received a letter or email stating that the position was filled. Once again, on June 16, 2023, the Electoral Board held a meeting announcing the hiring of Ginger Casilla. We know that she was Deputy Registered under Louis Garcia to return the ends June 2027. At this meeting, it was stated that the registered applicant would be notified the position had been filled, and that they so desire, the Electoral Board would consider them for the Deputy Registered Position. Why would the Electoral Board advertise for the position of registered, knowing that they already had in mind what they planned to do? Ginger, who had a job, was, was she ever interviewed? If so, by whom? Or did they just appoint her? Once again, why are we encouraging people to apply? If people are qualified, why not give them an interview? We realize that the board can't do anything about this. We know that. We just want you to know that how Buckingham is still not being transparent. What will it take to be transparent in Buckingham? What will it take? Thank you so much. Have a good day.
Marie Flowers, District Three, and Catherine Tanakas will be next.
Hi, Marie Flowers, District Three, and I want to expand on some of the things that Joyce Booker just said. I'm concerned about what has happened in the last election and what has happened in the past year. I don't know what you can do about it, but I think our election workers need to be protected against harassment and insult, insults. I think this year's election might just be training for the presidential election. I don't think this is going to go away. It may quiet down for a while, but I don't believe it's going to go away, and I don't know what you can do, but do something. You have to stand up to do, you all must figure out something. You have a lawyer back there. Somebody must know something to do. Also, I wanted to say something about the metal, heavy metal mining in Buckingham. I'm not sure what you all are going to do. Somebody wrote a letter to the editor saying that we have time to figure good things out. You know, I just hope that your main objective is the good of the citizens and the environment, and that letter writer might be right about having time. You know, small mining, small mines might be the answer. I don't know. I have no idea, but I think we need to wait and think about anything else before we accept any mining or make any other mining ordinances, although I like the no trespass thing, because I think it protects the neighbors. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Catherine Tanakas, District Five, and Wes Saxon will be next.
Catherine Tanakas, Glenmore District. At June's Election Board meeting, I was catching up with a friend who left work to continue constructively protesting as the citizens' voices. Disgusted with the destruction that we are experiencing, she introduced me to a mature woman as one of the people who are seriously injured by these death threats. I listened quietly. "I am a Republican. I am a Republican. For years, I worked the elections. If I go out and work the elections, they will hurt me in my home." She pointed to the two board members at the meeting table. "You never want to see this." Fist, fighting for her life, struggling to breathe from her grief. Question to Prosecutor Beasley. "In your office, you and Prosecutor Wright are studying the evidence of the many assault cases. One of the files with the medical reports is your sister, your Republican sister, who will only serve with her honor." Final questions. "These homegrown terrorists perform for the public. Violence is championed. How much more depraved bloodsport?" Question, "How much more depraved bloodsport?"
I got one thing to say before you go. That's not Kemper Beasley. You were pointing at him? You thought that was Kemper Beasley?
Sorry?
You thought that was Kemper Beasley?
Yes.
No, ma'am, it's not.
I'm sorry. Well, would you please get this to both the prosecutors?
And the county administrator, ma'am?
There's nothing, it's just what I said. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wes Saxon, District Four, and Donna McRae Jones will be next.
I'm Wes Saxon. I live across street 13265. To say I was surprised and disappointed when I found out that you all sold the timber would be an understatement. There was nothing in the agenda that I found on the county website announcing it. There was nothing in the minutes other than the discussions you all had last month. This came as a total surprise. There's interest in the industrial park in the timber, and the citizens had no idea this was coming up. I hope that you all will stop that, and let's open this the right way. There needs to be some transparency. We've heard that several times tonight, but you all apparently have an amended agenda tonight. I'm sitting back there, I have no idea what's on your amended agenda. If you amended the agenda last month, while you amended it is not in the minutes that I could find. So, and finally, Buckingham, I think, has an opportunity. As people are getting tired of the inner cities, and the cities and suburbs, and the problems they have, and we've got self-driving cars, I think the day is coming when people are going to be coming out to a place, a well-run county like Buckingham, and having their own home with more than a handful of dirt around the house. And I hope that Buckingham will start looking forward to that and planning some for that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Donna McRae Jones, District Two, and James Smith will be next.
Good evening. My name is Donna McRae Jones. I'm from District Two. And actually, when I came in, I was going to speak on several, well, two things, but then I was not going to speak, but then I decided I needed to speak. But after hearing the previous messages, statements that have been made, I'm going to hit them real quick, but loud. First of all, I'm here as to support my neighbor with respect to the fact that it has taken more than six months for her to get paid. Now, when she signed up to do her public duty, to be a part of the election board, she has stated that she did not have a bank account. So, I'm of the impression that she should, they should have politely told her that they couldn't use her services, but that wasn't the case, because we needed her services. She has since been paid, but at the same time with that, with everything that's going on, with everything that's going on in Buckingham, it's to the point now, when I go to places and have a general conversation with people, and I mention Buckingham, like at my meeting this morning in Farmville, and I was asked, "Donna, are you still running for Board of Supervisors? You're crazy if you are." Buckingham is on the map, okay? People are looking at us that shouldn't be looking at us. Our business should be our business. I say this, if you don't stand up for something, you're going to fall for anything. And as it goes now, people looking at us, wondering, "What's going on in Buckingham?" And I have to say this, anybody's listening or looking that's watching virtually is this, it's your fault, people, because you voted to put these people in place, meaning you, the Board of Supervisors. Now, I say that to say this, you have not because you act not. And if no action is taken, then nothing's get done. I watch with the, oh, I'm losing time, but anyway, I'll come back to that. But anyway, what I'm seeing is this, and with the NACP, I have to say that, yes, I was one of those that put an application out there. The only way it got acknowledged that it was received was because the admin received it. But I too didn't get an interview for when I was trying to vote for the supervisors. So, you need to look at yourselves, check what's being done, and do something about it. I decided, as I stated before, when I decided not to run, I could do more damage here.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Thank you very much.
James Smith, District Four, and that will be it.
Good evening. James Smith.
James Smith, District Four. I apologize. I came here pretty last minute, finishing up and butchering turkeys at our small little farm, which is what we do on our property, and we, of course, sell those turkeys, and that's how we make our income. If there's anything, and I know you all have a lot on your agenda, and just sitting there listening, man, there's a lot of things going on in Buckingham, and I'm sorry to bring you one more. If we learned anything from 2020, is that we can't rely on stuff that's not around here. We need access to local supplies, local goods, most specifically, local food. If we can't get our food local, then we're gonna be at the mercy of whoever's producing it a long way away. Supply chain problems, shutting down facilities, food being in control of a small number of corporations, these are all things that make your freezer or your refrigerator in jeopardy when times are rough. So, one of the things that we need is the ability to process meat locally. And the problem is, we just don't have it, not here in Buckingham, not anywhere in the U.S. And we have a couple of facilities here that are small processors, custom processors. But the closest, there was one in Cumberland that was up for a USDA facility, and it got voted down, because the neighbors were scared of what was gonna be put across the street from them. The problem we have is that people have the wrong idea of these small, local processors. And what they think of is something corporate, like Tyson Foods, with thousands of pounds of animal going in the front door, and thousands of pounds of hazardous waste coming out the back. And small facilities just aren't like that. Now, we can burn the waste, or we can do what's better, compost the waste. Composting the waste provides a fertilizer that's just not available. The best we could do here in Buckingham is municipal waste being poured on fields everywhere. So, which is loaded with stuff like the PFAS and those kind of things, things that are poisoning our ground, things the state won't even talk about. And if you think gold mining's gonna be bad, wait till everybody realizes what their groundwater has in it from all that. Nobody's for somebody putting a large facility on their property line, or dumping hazardous waste in their waterway. But we need to look at where these facilities are gonna go. Small-time folks like myself cannot afford to buy into industrial zones. It puts us right out. Legislation put in place by corporate interests keeps us out of the game. It's un-American. We need to look at what we need to do, and I know this is coming up for you all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
That's all.
Mr. Scott Frederick, VDOT.
Evening, Chairman at Bullworth. Thank you for having me. So, we got two items on the VDOT matters tonight, one with the box like where he's here behind me. But once a year, I go through statistics on crashes in the Commonwealth and also in the county. So, I came prepared to do that tonight. The numbers for the 2022 year are on the Department of Motor Vehicles website. They have a very good repository of the data. It's broken down very well by jurisdiction. But for 2022, there was 122,434 crashes in the Commonwealth. 1,005 fatalities resulted from those crashes. So, the website gives what they call a death rate from those numbers, and it's by million miles traveled, which was 1.22. They also give that in the Commonwealth, there's 6,089,073 licensed drivers. So, the death rate by county is actually given per 100, or per 1,000 licensed drivers. So, I broke the statewide number down. It gives a rate of 0.165 per 1,000 drivers. So, in the statewide numbers, there was 6,910 crashes where alcohol was a contributing factor to the crash. 274 of those were fatal. Speed as a contributing factor is the big one, with 24,877 and 441 fatalities associated with it. And then unrestrained or no seatbelt was 5,427 crashes with 375 fatalities associated with that. So, the big thing you can do to increase your chances of surviving a crash, or not having one in the first place, would be to not drink and drive, not speed, and definitely wear your seatbelt. Taking a deeper dive into the numbers, Buckingham County had 180 crashes in 2022, three fatalities associated with the crashes. There's 10,586 licensed drivers in the county, and that does give a death rate per 1,000 drivers of 0.28, slightly above that 0.165 statewide average. But that, when you run the numbers backwards, that means one out of 3,571 people was what that works out to. So, then in the contributing factors categories for the county, there was 11 crashes with alcohol-related, zero fatalities. 46 crashes with speed-related, that's two fatalities in that category. And 28 crashes with no seatbelt or unrestrained, with one fatality associated with that. So, a lot of times, people like come to me when there's a crash and say, like, the road, like, what can you do to stop this? But like, it's not all, it's not the road, per se. Like, I do get to play a little bit of a role in the crash rate, because there's, it's like a three-legged stool, is the analogy I've seen, where one of the legs of the stool is engineering of the roads and maintenance of the roads. Two is law enforcement, holding people accountable to drive, you know, by the laws that are out there on the roads. And then three, the third leg of the stool, is having a well-educated driver that's not distracted. So, I do, I do play a little role in that, but it's, it's really something that I don't have full control of. So, I wanted to point that out. If you were to take a deeper look at the roadway part of that equation, like, if I was to ask you, what's the best engineered roads that we have in the state of Virginia? Your answer would probably be the interstate system. Every curve is designed, you got full shoulder widths, full lane widths, guard rails, the speed limit is set, everything's perfect on the interstate. And if I asked you, do people still crash on the interstate? You'd say yes. So, just wanted to point that out. And then, as far as maintenance goes, it's been a little bit of a, not a lot to report on, I'll say. We've been mowing on the primary and secondary system. We had some storms bring down some trees. There's a lot of them down on 60. We have them cut back. The debris that's still out there, a lot of it still has utility lines in it. So, we're trying to work with our utility partners on that cleanup, but we are working on getting it cleaned up. Then moving on into the summer, we're gonna be doing a lot more drainage work throughout the county, replacing pipes, ditching work. But I felt like at this time, I could either open it up to comment, or we could do the other part of the VDOT agenda, however the board would like to do.
The board member have a question, Mr. Frederick. District One.
I've already talked to Scott, but what I had, so I'm. Frederick, thank you for addressing some of my concerns at the last meeting. I wasn't able to attend. I think Jordan asked you some of my concerns. First of all, backing out was done immediately after. Talk about, Bell Road seems has been taken care of, and I'll tell you what, you probably got the hardest working bunch, where Mr. Ohm helped on Scott's Bottom Road, Route 60. I guess that's enough firewood left up to burn for the county for a long time, and I know they gotta move most of that. I understand what you said about addressing the concern and disagree with me and you on Sire crossing 60. I read the report that you gave, or watched it on YouTube. All I can tell you is I agree or disagree with that, and I hope none of it gets hurt, and I hope it made the right decision. The other concern I had was this traffic study that was done behind Moss Motor Company in Pino. I understand that, I guess, nothing's gonna change with that, and I understand that I'm not an engineer or any part of VDOT. It just sits common sense. It's hard for me to quite understand how a road that's a semicircle, about three-quarters of a mile, can have a speed limit of 55 miles an hour, and a road that is a main corridor on 15 in front of Pino's and Moss Motor Company, that has a straight stretch from Mr. Saxons all the way to Dollar General, can have a speed limit of 45 miles an hour with 25 times, 100 times as much traffic in a day. I understand that that was done and researched a long time ago, and I guess that's the way it was answered, that it would be done because it was a long time ago. But if it was a mistake a long time ago, did a mistake ride from a long time ago, or was it able to change it? Because I, maybe you could explain that to me, how a main corridor with a straight stretch is at 45, and a semicircular road is at 55 directly behind it, and maybe I'm missing it, I just don't quite understand that. So, tell me that, I'd really appreciate it.
I'm sorry. Apologize.
Thanks, Jordan.
From the report, it's not that it was a mistake made a long time ago. Because in accordance with the above, which was the memorandum I read from, I guess the way we do business, they put out a memorandum regarding secondary roads. Due to the extremely low traffic volume of 230 vehicles per day and no crash activity, the 0.45-mile unposted section of Route 750 does not qualify for a full speed study, but is eligible for review and to determine the need for warning signs or other traffic control devices. So, the portion that's unposted is less than a half mile long.
And that speed limit is what?
55. It's a paved road, if I'm not mistaken, so statutory speed limit is 55 miles per hour for passenger vehicles, and 45 miles per hour for trucks, commercial vehicles. So, with it being so short, then I.
I would see how they would have a hard time getting up to 55 and slowing down.
Something I was gonna say, but I felt like you probably had a rebuttal for that. But the road with 230 vehicles per day is local traffic. People that use that road probably use it every day.
I understand.
And they, they're well aware of the, what's on that road. But yeah, I did what you asked me the first time. I had it submitted to Traffic Engineering, and this was the.
And I understand, I just, I have a hard time understanding how a main corridor could be 45 on a straight stretch, and a semicircular road that was less than a half a mile long could have a 50 mile, 5 mile an hour speed limit. But I understand, I don't make the rules, I just wanted to ask that, because it didn't make sense to me. And I don't think it would make sense to most people that looked at it, but I'm sure that it is a reason. But it is what it is. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
District Three.
I gave you some information on three places on Route 15.
Yes, sir.
I'll take care of looking at those, but there's a couple of other things, too. The, it's a tree that's leaning, and it's a dead tree on Old Shepherd's Road, and it's on the left-hand side, about, probably not even a quarter of a mile down that road. Also, the show, I know that you're probably doing a lot of shoulder work right now with all this rain. It's been a lot of wash spots. And one road in particular is School Road and Curdville Road at the intersection of Curdville, going both ways. The shoulder is just, there's no shoulder there. And when it, when it drops off, it's about 10 or 12 inches, going both ways, from School Road, it would be all the way to Plank Road. And then, on the other side, starting on 15, it goes both ways as far as you want to go. It's not necessarily all the way, but there are spots there that it is eroding pretty bad, so.
I'll have that, they'll take a look at that. Sounds like we'll need to address those low shoulders and regrade some of those, those bad areas.
How do you go about, is that countywide, or y'all have a schedule that you do those shoulders routinely, or how does that?
We try to do it in a cycle, and we've just gotten way behind. But the work we did in Supervisor Davis's area is a start to try to get caught back up, addressing shoulders and ditching, all that work. So, we're gonna start sticking to a cycle again, and get everything caught back up.
I have noticed also, quite a few driveways are stopped up from this rain. Is there a schedule with, I think there's, y'all have a machine that you go around in each county, it's kind of on a rotational basis. When do we, when does Buckingham get that? Because I've got several.
The sewer cleaner, Buckingham has it right now, and we were using it near 610 on 15, and it broke down. Just came, just came back from the shop last week, so we're starting that type of work again. We keep that machine pretty busy this time of year.
Okay. How long will you have it?
Well, we have two of them for the four counties I serve, so I think you share it with one other county, but we'll, we'll keep it pretty busy here.
I'll try to get you some addresses on some of those the next time.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
District Four.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. So, with regards to the Mason district, I wanted to, I know this has been alluded to, but I wanted to thank VDOT, but also our, you know, police, state and local, and EMS and our volunteer fire departments responding to these, especially these two really bad storms that, for some reason, love going over to District Two and hammering Route 60. I know other counties have, I mean, other parts of the counties have been hit, but, but especially that area, for some reason, is like a magnet for horrific storms. So, thank you all for that. Secondly, for the folks that travel through the Courthouse Village, the speed limit is 35, not 55, and there are now speed readers, thanks to you all in the county, that are put up. I stood out there yesterday, and somebody blew by me going about 55 miles an hour, and they clocked me, so, or they, the sign clocked them. Sorry, they didn't clock me, I can't run that fast. The speed reader's clocked me at 6, not 50. But also, just wanted to follow up, too. With regards to some of the issues I brought up on Troublesome Creek Road, Dixie Hill Road, Twin Creek Road with the potholes, have any of those been addressed, to your knowledge?
The potholes, yes, but there is some areas of those roads where there's just alligator cracking. We're gonna have to get those surface treated with the surface treatment schedule, so haven't been able to do that yet. That's also on a cycle, but I think that starts up in August.
There are several roads in my district, and probably every district, that are cracked up really bad, so if you all could please draw attention to that. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
District Five.
I have a thing, did you get a chance to check on Old 13?
Old 13.
Over the pipe on Old 13, it was.
I'm gonna have to double-check. I remember putting it in my notes last time, and I probably submitted a work order on it, but I'll have to go back and see if it's been completed.
That's all I have.
Already discussed with you on District Six, about the bridge.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. District Seven.
Well, I just, like you got over on 60, then on 617, it's a little more stuff down on the side of the road. And I saw, and on 60, and then Scott's Bottom Road, that's terrible, too.
Yes, it is.
But the guys that's working down there today, are they going around to all the roads and cleaning up the trees that are hanging? Is that what they're doing?
That's a contractor doing that work, and I believe it's associated with utility, like, the utility contractors are doing that. But I don't know their schedule or where they're supposed to be next. Haven't dug that information up.
Yeah, they were working down 60 today, I just saw them, but like I said, I still got some more on Gravel Hill Road in the ditches and close to the road. If somebody runs off-road a little bit, they could run into a tree or big limb.
Okay. I'll get with the area headquarters, make sure we get those locations cleaned up. Thank you, sir.
I'm not gonna be able to keep that speed limit right, but we'll have a truck pulled here on, sorry, that's gonna be a loaded road.
Sure is.
That's all I got, too.
They shouldn't be running 55 with the amount of vehicles that'll be coming.
If you're running over 5 miles, now you're rolling.
That stretch of the road was, that semicircle road, that was 15, Route 15.
That was the original Route 15.
Right, original Route 15. Actually, it was 55 miles an hour.
Okay, well, is that, are we on to the next? Okay, well, uh, is that, are we on to the next part of the...
Yes, sir, Mr. Crossman?
Well, I've been working on and off with the Boxley Quarry, uh, and I guess I'll set the stage for them. What they want to do is get a new road through where their company is, the mine, the slate quarry. Uh, they want to straighten out the road that's there, so they've put it, they're working to put a design together. I think they have a preliminary design about done. But, so at their cost, they're gonna take that curve out of the road, which is a win-win. We get a better road and they're paying for it. But some of our conversations, I've said that they'll need to, when they get ready to do this work, they'll need to have the board pass a resolution to abandon the road that's there and take in the new road, which is something we've done before. But, uh, they, they do, they do need you guys to cooperate with them as well as VDOT, so, uh, they've come prepared to, I guess, speak, um, so I just set the stage for them and answer any questions that you guys may have.
Anybody having a question, Mr. Crossman?
My name is Brian Cosman, I'm with Hurt and Profit and Engineer at Lynchburg, and we are working with Boxley up in the Arvonia part of the county. Route six-seventy-five, as was mentioned, a portion of the road gets real close to a quarry wall there. And we have been surveying and monitoring that to make sure that there's not, uh, that wall is not moving any closer to the road. So what Boxley has approached us to do is come up with a design to look at straightening out that road and moving it away from that quarry wall. And we can easily do that, straightening out the road, so it does make it a little safer taking out the curve, and also moves it away from that, that existing quarry wall. But this will be done at Boxley's cost. Really, as was mentioned, it's just gonna be a, uh, some cooperation, coordination needed with county for right-of-way abandonment of the, the existing road, and then the new right-of-way for the, for the new section of road. Uh, we have a conceptual design at this point, I don't know if, if you've got a copy of it, but it's, it's a pretty minor change. And it, what we'll do is we'll work forward, i- if the county's, uh, agreeing with, with cooperation on this, we'll continue to work with VDOT on approving the road design, and then, um, come back to the county once we have a design. And we'll, we'll have to deal with the right-of-way plats and, and issues at that point. But, um, I can answer any questions you may have about the, the road or the project this time.
Do you any board members have a question, Mr. Crossman?
It's my district, so, but I think it's a great idea, because that road, that curve, were quite a few wrecks there every year, stood with dump trucks and all coming at it all the time. Actually, just, I think it's a great idea, so I would be on board.
I think it's a great idea, too, you improving it.
How long, how long is that piece of road that you're straightening out there, you know?
How long is it?
It looks like about fifteen-hundred feet, by the time you tie back in on each end.
So what you asking tonight, just the board blessing to go follow?
I, I don't know that we need a blessing, it's just more is, is, if the county's willing to, to work with VDOT and Boxley on this, and we'll proceed.
Yep.
You don't want to make a motion like that? Why can't we make a motion tonight to do it, uh, we...
Make a motion that the county works with VDOT and Boxley on doing the road improvement and work with them on that, second.
Motion by Supervisor Davis, second by Supervisor Matthews, that we will work with VDOT and Boxley on this project, all in favor? Seven yes, okay, Mr. Wiley?
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Freyrick. Uh, Carter, on this, um, claim from the Sheriff's Office, you, yeah?
The claim?
Yeah, uh-huh.
Yes, Supervisor Miles, when you did your claims earlier, added that to his motion to approve the... So you approved it when you approved the claims earlier.
All right, okay, thank you. We went down to public hearing, Ms. Emerson?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I believe the first, uh, public hearing, um, the county administrator, Mr. Carter, will handle.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The first, uh, public hearing we have tonight is, uh, amend the Buckingham County water and sewer ordinances. Uh, I brought to you this last month, as we, uh, were looking at increasing the fees for some hookup connections. And, uh, we found out that the ordinance contained the actual fees. Those ordinance haven't been updated since two thousand and two. You know, as we said before, we don't want to make money on connection, we're gonna lose money as well when we install them. So what we thought in the committee, utilities committee met when they talked about this project or this issue was, we would like to take those fees out of the ordinance, so when you need to change the ordinance, and just the fees, you have to change the ordinance, have a public hearing every time. So you'll see in the, um, sample ordinance you have tonight, we've taken out the fees and we reference C-attached fee schedule. So that way you can change the fees going forward, not having a public hearing each time you want to change them in the ordinance. So all we did was leave, leave all the meat and potatoes in the ordinance in there in place, and just took out the fees and attached a separate schedule for them. The one change we did make with the fees, uh, the residential connections were two thousand dollars per residential connection, we changed that to three thousand dollars. But that was the only fee change we made in a fee schedule. So, uh, tonight's public hearing is on both the ward and sewer ordinances, that we would like to take out the fees and the ordinance and put a fee schedule at the end with, as an attachment, so. I don't know if Ms. Land, has anybody signed up tonight for that or not?
No one's signed up.
We open the public hearing, so nobody's signing up, so we close it, all right?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we amend the, uh, the water and sewer ordinance as stated, and pull the water fee schedule out as a fee schedule that's not part of the, uh, actual ordinance.
Motion by Supervisor Miles, that we would do this, and second by Supervisor Gilliam, all in favor, no questions? Seven yes?
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Emerson?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we have a public hearing tonight for case twenty-three ZTA SUP three-twenty-six. Landowner David Christian, applicant Marcy Lowrance, tax map sixty-eight parcel thirty-seven. It does contain just over twenty-five acres. It's located at fifty-nine Gold Hill Elementary School Road, it is in the Marshall District. It's currently zoned M-one, and of course, this case was introduced to you all last month, and you agreed to hold the public hearing. The applicant's request is to add a zoning text amendment for a private recreational facility to a list of special uses in this light industrial M-one zoning district, and apply for a special use permit for that purpose. So the request is actually twofold, um, when it's time to make the motions. Uh, Ms. Lowrance is here in the, in the audience to address questions or concerns. I would like to add that there are multiple, uh, four comments that have been emailed in um, by supporters of Ms. Lowrance and her business endeavor. Would you like for me to read those, or just commit them to the minutes of the meeting?
Yes, submit them to the minister, thank you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
We open the public hearing, I don't think anybody's signing up to speak. We close the public hearing, what is the pledge of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve this.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Supervisor Davis, second by Supervisor Miles, that we approve it, all in favor?
I just got one question, one thing, I know, I'm tickled with it myself, too, but, uh, I've had some people ask me and talk about, in between the drug department and y'all playing, is it any way you can have a door there to be locked or closed, so the kids can't get in? That's all I wanted to bring in open.
Mr. Chairman, there was one person, a Liberty Johnson, District One, that signed up to speak.
I'm sorry, who, oh, yeah, we got that straight.
We did, okay.
Thank you, uh-huh, yeah. All in favor of the motion? Yeah, my, my thing that messed up again, here, hold on.
There you go.
Mr. Schumacher? Mr., the chairman inadvertently voted no.
I didn't vote no, I voted yes.
What it says on the board, that's what I'm saying. We need to change it. We need to change the vote. That machine.
That voter fraud.
I didn't vote yes, you baby, I voted yes, that thing that messed up. And you say, yeah?
Yeah. Several times.
I hit it three, four times, and it still came up no.
All right, so y'all go have to vote again?
Let's vote again.
Vote again.
Okay.
Did Joe vote no again?
I voted, eh, eh, look here, that thing that comes again.
That machine does not cooperate.
It voted that time, something wrong with that thing.
There you go.
Seven yes, we got it right now.
There you go.
Congratulations, y'all.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The next case before you is an introduction of twenty-three SUP three-twenty-seven. The landowners, Richard and Terry Harris at two-eleven Holland Road, Farmville. The applicant is U.S. Cellular, the agent is Emily Lauer, uh, representing this application. The tax map is one-ninety-six parcel thirteen, it does contain just under forty-five acres. And as I mentioned, it is located at two-eleven Holland Road in the Curdville Magisterial District, currently zoned A-one. The request by the applicant is to obtain a special use permit for the purpose of constructing a one-hundred-and-ninety-nine-foot monopole communications tower. The applicant is asking the Board of Supervisors to schedule a public hearing for this request. There are fifteen conditions attached to the special use permit request that include all of the recommendations by the county's consultant, which is Cityscape. This case was introduced to the Planning Commission May twenty-second, and a public hearing was held June twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three. The Planning Commission sends this case after a vote with seven of eight members present with unanimous recommendation of approval. Would it be the pleasure of the Board of Supervisors to schedule a public hearing for this request? Possibly August twenty-fourteenth, excuse me, twenty-twenty-three at six P.M.
I think we need to put it on hold. If you want to look, you got this part about the, uh, VDOT that signed the paperwork, that was actually done eleven-twenty-eight-twenty-two. And if you go down to the bottom of it, it says this paperwork is only supposed to be used once, and then expires in sixty days. And it's been over two-hundred days, so that VDOT part has expired. The next thing, there was supposed to be in a picture of where they're gonna put the pole, and then how much improvement it would be in that area, and we still don't have it, do we, Nikki?
There were propagation maps that were, um, shown June twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three. There was a change showing the coverage areas, how they would increase. I don't know that it was, um, as clear as, as some of the members of the Planning Commission, uh, may have wanted, but it did show the, um, additional areas of coverage provided by this tower. Ms. Lauer is joining us virtually this evening to address any, um, questions or concerns. And, um, she was not able to attend the June twenty-six meeting, but her coworker, Mr. Robert Parish, did attend on behalf of U.S. Cellular. I'm sure that Mr. Parish may have agreed to reaching back out to, um, to VDOT. I'm not sure, Emily, are you available?
Ma'am, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you so much.
Yeah, you're welcome. Um, yeah, we did provide an updated, um, form from VDOT that they reissued us a new one on three-fourteen-twenty-three that was good for six months, and I did provide that to you all in Cityscape.
Okay, I will be sure to send that out to the board, um, tomorrow immediately if it was included with Cityscape, if it's good for six months. Cityscape does review all of our applications for completeness, so that would have been, um, one of the forms that Cityscape would have requested as well.
How about the pictures of the updates on how the poles would actually increase, uh, the usage in those areas? Have you got any more pictures of that?
Only what was displayed at the June twenty-six meeting. Emily, you followed up after the May twenty-second meeting with more propagation maps, and they were
Yes.
Just, they were displayed in June to the Planning Commission.
Correct, yes. Yeah, and the RF engineer said that that was really the best he could do to zoom in properly to show what he needed to show. Um, I'm not sure if, you know, if there's something else you need, I can happily ask them, but he just said that was, you know, really the best he could do to zoom in and still show everything that he needed to.
The ones you updated in Arvonia look good, but the ones over here, the ones we're looking at right now, no, I didn't see nothing on that.
Mr. Chairman?
Let somebody else see it.
Chairman, could I ask the zoning administrator, what was the vote to forward this on to, from the Planning Commission?
Uh, we had seven of eight members present, and they voted unanimously to send this to you with a recommendation.
Okay, I think we should, I mean, in the meantime, I think we, I, just, in my opinion, we, we could advertise it for public hearing, that'll give folks more time to, to get clearer proper gate, propagation maps, if we can get them. I think we need more cell phone towers in this county, quite frankly.
That's what we asked for at this last meeting that we had for the public hearing, public comment.
That's a motion, Mr. Wiley?
Yes, sir.
Can you get a second?
Yes, sir.
Hold it in a second, that we will pass it on to public hearing in August, all in favor? Six yes, okay.
I will tell you, there is a dead spot from that, where that
Yep.
proposed tower is, all the way past Shepherd's Store, almost, well, past Bates Market. So hopefully it's gonna help with that area.
And that's what I wanted to see, something to show that, but it doesn't nothing show that yet. And you're voting for something that you don't even know what it's gonna do for you. That's my thought.
I don't think it's gonna hurt it.
I agree.
Okay.
Mr. Davis?
You don't know?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and gentlemen of the board. Try to be pretty quick about this. Before I get into it, I do want to take a minute, it's been up here, a while since I've been up here in front of you guys, which is probably a breath of fresh air for some of you, but, uh, I think that's because of your continued support and the things that we've been able to achieve because of that, and I hope you're proud of it. And, uh, I just want you to know that myself and the staff do realize that you guys are the reasons that we're where we are, and we, we appreciate that. Uh, and to, to continue off of that brown nose, and I'm gonna ask for your support on one more thing tonight. Uh, you know that we're a fan of grants at the department, and we have been blessed with the, uh, Rescue Squad Assistance Fund as a grant given out by the state. Seems like every year they give out fewer and fewer. This year, the, the overall budget was pretty small compared to the previous years that they granted. And actually, in terms of an ambulance grant, only thirteen in the state were given. So us getting one of those was pretty powerful. Uh, it is for a total of one-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand, it does require a fifty percent match from you guys. Uh, that one-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand that would come from the county funds, um, it'll be a while before we cross that bridge, because ambulance, um, excuse me, ambulance build times are up to thirty-nine months now. So, uh, you know, nothing that's gonna come out of the budget in the immediate future, but it does require your appropriation and, and approval. If you feel led to do so, happy to answer any questions. Like I said, that thirty-nine-month, uh, lead time actually works well. You, you've supported us and allowed us to get a few other new ambulances in the last few years. So by the time that next one come off the line, one of those first ones you brought us would be at the three-hundred-thousand-mile mark, which is what we estimate to be time to put it in reserve status, not frontline status. Because if you don't, then they start costing you fifty thousand a year in just maintenance costs or so, it seems like. So I feel pretty good about the timeline with things. But that is my ask of you guys tonight.
About having a question, Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir. Davis, uh, I'm, I'm really behind this because, number one, I'm on the EMS committee, and I think you've done a great job. But I do remember on our last, uh, vehicle that we purchased, it wasn't one-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand, so.
Right, so, um, like, so this is a, a fifty-fifty grant, so, you know, one-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand times two is what they're projecting the cost to actually be. And that's where you, you guys would pair another one-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars with it, and we would get, um, enough to buy the ambulance. And honestly, the state, um, they have a, a, a list, um, of the things that people are asking for in these grants, and it puts a, a price with, beside everything, and so, uh, and I'm horrible in this. What's one-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand times two? Three-fifty. Three-fifty is actually beyond what, what our last quoted ambulance was. So that should be plenty of, of safeguard there for us, I think they're now up to three-thirty or so. Uh, the first two y'all bought was for two-seventy, so that's just showing inflation and COVID doing what it does. But, uh, yes, you're right, one-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand doesn't touch it, but it covers over fifty percent of it.
And Carl, how are we gonna fund this thing? Our, our half of the grant?
Well, if, if we're talking about a lead time of most three years, we can try to build this in the budget for the next couple of years, so you want to stroke that check all at one time.
Okay.
So it, I got, Mr. Chairman?
I said, wait.
So when does this grant, I'm looking at July one of twenty-twenty-three to June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-four? So when does this grant, I'm looking at July one of twenty-twenty-three to June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-four.
Right.
Have to place the order in between that time, or how does that work? Because, I mean, to be a match, I know I deal with it with the fire department.
Yeah, I think ideally, we would have the grant closed up at the end of the fiscal year, but just because of the lead times on these ambulances, it's not a reality. So they basically, I'll probably have to put something on the letterhead that Carl would sign that says, you know, here's the purchase order, the sales agreement, and, you know, in thirty-nine months, we'll have it, or by then, it will be hopefully less than that.
So you can lock your grant in code, right?
Yeah, that's my. A lot of times with these grants, you have to show that you're committed to them before they go ahead. So you don't have to spend it, but you gotta show that you're committed to it.
Okay. That's, that was the question I had, because I was reading over it, and I said, whoa, whoa, that's.
Yeah. That's probably why they don't give out so many of these grants for the ambulances, because it's a door they can't close for a while. So just like, you know, Kevin wants to get our books cleaned up, I guess they do too, but they can't with those thirteen ambulances. So I don't know, but we got one, so.
Thirty-nine months, our new ambulances, now be old ambulances, eh?
Right, exactly.
What is the pledge of the board?
I make a motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Supervisor Matthews. Second by Supervisor Miles, we approve this request. All in favor? Seven yes.
Thank you all again. Appreciate it.
Move to add to end appointments to committees, board, and agencies. The Industrial Development Authority consider the appointment appointment for the Industrial Development Authority Member for District Five, Pat Huberman.
I will talk to him. I'm sure, pretty sure I reappoint him, but we got to September to do this.
Okay.
I ain't gonna do it tonight.
All right, thank you, sir. Ken, Attorney Matters? Ken, the Minister's report.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. In your package tonight is a recommendation from the Community Center Committee. You tasked with the committee last month with looking at, consider reduce rates for non-for-profits in the county. And we met and looked at that possibility. The Community Center Committee looked at and made several recommendations that they want you to consider tonight. In your package tonight, you see one of the things we recommended was a non-for-profit wanting to do something that community center get reduced rates. We need to show their five-oh-one C status on their non-for-profit. They must be a local five-oh-one C or serve Buckingham County residents. So I think last month, you had something from the Veterans Council. They may be out of account from Farmville or Prince Edward, but yet they were doing this for Buckingham residents, so they were qualified. Based on that, they must have an event that gives back to the community. So it can't be like an organizational party or Christmas party. It's gotta be something that's helping the taxpayers or the citizens of the county. It must be a single event, so something that's gonna use multi-days or multi-weeks would not qualify for the discounted rate. And then at the very end, they must still follow all of Recreation Department rules. So this recommendation is coming from the committee. If you agree with this, you need to take no action tonight, because the recommendation from the committee, if you have any issues, we can talk about it. You want to add anything or take anything out? We can do that tonight as well.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to commend the committee. These reduced rates for Buckingham and local nonprofits who serve Buckingham has been a long time coming. So thank the committee. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome. Thank you, sir. All right, Miss Con.
Next thing on my items, I give you guys a Personnel Committee report on a separate cover. And I just want to point out as well, Mr. Davis probably knows that our bonus entrance has been completed, so that I looked at, I saw a picture, it looked pretty good, so.
I got the clothes sign in my truck, because they left that up, and a lady called me the other evening and broke nasty. She said, if it's open back up, how come it's still clothes sign up? So I went down and cut it off, and it's in my truck. I told Lynn that I'd give it to him tomorrow or something.
But thank you for taking care of that.
Gotta go and keep it for a souvenir.
But it looks good.
Yeah, it does look good. I saw.
It looks real good.
That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Other board matters?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I have, I have a request from a constituent. The varsity boys, men's baseball team went really, 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 really far this year. I'm not exactly sure how far they went. Maybe someone who is.
Semi-final of the state championship.
Can inform us. They went to the state. Now, no, I've gotten so much smarter in the last three seconds. They went to the state semifinal championships, and they represented Buckingham quite well. So with my new knowledge I've got, I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we honor the team at the next month's meeting, please.
Is that a motion?
Yes, sir.
Motion by Supervisor Miles, second by Supervisor Gilliam, that we will honor the team on the next board meeting, August. Okay? All in favor? Seven yes, okay. Any other board matters?
Yes, sir. I discovered one thing, well, two things. One, I was, you know, looking at the registers list, and I know that three of our school board members departments don't have nobody that's signed up to be running.
Yep.
It's our fourth district, fifth district, and sixth district. So only thing I think we could do right now would be to find somebody that wants to run and get them to go that day that we have it voting, and ask people to sign their name in, and that's the only way we can get somebody in them department.
I thought it was one of District Four.
Well. No.
Nope.
No, he didn't, he didn't get qualified. He didn't get his petition.
He maybe didn't qualify, like you said, but if you can get them to sign their names, enough people to sign their name when they go vote for them the day they vote for them, that's one way to do it.
Well, we brought his two right in, that's all.
Four, five, and six.
Lynn Moore. Slate River.
Me.
Joe.
Mr. Chairman, I'd say I think that's probably already happening amongst people who are running, who are willing to run his right-ins.
Well, I'm just, I'm just saying, it'd be nice to help them out, try to find somebody and make sure they know to go to the voting, outside the voting thing, people signing names.
Nobody qualified, my dear. They didn't get the sickness.
And you talking about the softball, the ballgames. We got some young girls had a ballgame, softball games, and they made it to the state. And they are probably like in third place of, in the state. And it'd be nice to add them to the same thing you talking about.
Thank y'all treat them all the same. I got no problem with that.
Sure, so, Mr. Chairman, I don't, I don't keep, I haven't, I haven't kept up with them, which is, I apologize for that. Are they still playing?
No, they.
No, the girls.
Yesterday.
And what's the name of the team? Supervisor Brunton?
Darlings.
The Buckingham Darlings.
Darlings, yeah.
So I'd offer a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we honor, do you all want to do it at the next meeting?
Yeah, that'd be good.
Okay, the Buckingham Darlings for their accolades and going so far, swinging the bat, catching the balls.
A motion by Supervisor Miles, second by Supervisor Brandt, that we honor these girls at the next meeting, August meeting. All in favor? Seven, yes. I like the, I noticed when, like, the point to task the Personnel Committee, law enforcement members to fulfill a vacancy for the supervisors, come up with a plan when the supervisor seat is vacant. I like the Personnel Committee, Mr. Carter, Mr. Wright, Mr. Gilliam, and Mr. Gerald Washington to serve on that committee. Make a recommendation back to the board.
Be three board members, Mr. Chairman, if you do that.
Be three board members?
The Personnel Committee plus Mr. Gillian.
Okay.
You can take me off, that's fine.
Well, that's, okay. That's right, it's two of us on the Personnel Committee. All right, the Personnel Committee with Mr. Carter and Mr. Wright and Gerald Washington.
Do you need a motion for that, Mr. Chairman? So I would offer that motion that the Personnel Committee, along with the citizen member, Mr. Washington, and our county staff, as deemed appropriate by the county administrator, take up the, amending the bylaws is what it would be, right, Mr. Chairman? To addressing, filling unexpired vacancies. And I'd like to add to that, since we're talking about bylaws, I'd like to see, and this is no reflection of the gentleman who served on the Planning Commission, because he's done so quite well and put up with a lot, a lot, a lot of different cases. The two leadership positions on the Board of Supervisors are rotated every year. And I'd like to see the committee, and, you know, however you want to do this when we go to vote on the bylaws, whenever we do it, I'd like to see the committee to perhaps take up the rotation of the Board of Supervisors representative, just because I think it's a great learning experience. The Planning Commission has a lot of heavy lifting that they bring to us every single month, and they're meeting twice a month now. And I realize that it can be a lot on any one person to serve an extended period of time. And again, this is no reflection of Supervisor Allen. But I do think, since we, since we rotate the chairman and the vice chairman, why not rotate that spot to let everyone get a learning experience? And you could even put it in the bylaws, that's vice chairman would serve as the board representative to the Planning Commission, because that, because that seat's gonna rotate every year. That's a given. So that's just my opinion on that. Again, the committee would consider it.
I think it's a fair way of doing it, getting everybody to change their service. I got no.
Just like the chairmanship and the vice chairmanship. And it'd be ex officio.
All right, can we get a second?
Again, the motion is looking at two different things, so addressing the bylaws with regards to unexpired terms and the.
Got a second.
Planning Commission, excuse me.
Could I add something?
Yes, sir.
I don't know that we would need to, I would like to see it go on a two-year term, because I'd hate for them to be in the middle of something, and then you have to switch them out. You see what I'm saying? If you start on something, comes in in December, and they get started on it, and then they, could we do, on the Planning Commission, the board, my member serves two year, and then the next two years, somebody else would serve in that.
I'm fine with that. I'd be interested to see what the committee brings back, of course.
Instead of them starting on a project, and then somebody else has got to pick it up right in the middle of it, and they didn't get on board with it in the beginning. Do you see where I'm coming from?
I do. The only risk with that, Mr. Chairman, is that if an election, if someone gets, whatever happens, the result could break that two years up. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
But I'm fine with that. That's, that's fine.
Okay, we heard the motion, and second, are all in favor of the motion?
Yeah, are you gonna do two years or one?
It's gonna be served two years.
I'd amend that motion to reflect what Supervisor Davis.
Two years, right. Okay. Instead of one year serving, they have two years.
When's it gonna take effect?
When we adopt the bylaws in January.
When the new chairman come on and start.
In January. And Chairman Davis comes, coming around.
It's a four-year now.
They might write me out.
Name back a right there. All in favor of the motion?
You move from a four-year to two years, is that what you're talking about?
Just don't do.
My motion is just for the committee to study it. That's all for right now, to bring us back recommendations.
All in favor of the motion? Yeah, six, six yes, one, okay. Any other board matters? Here now, we need to go into executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I'd offer a motion that the Board of Supervisors enter into executive closed session under the Code of Virginia, Section two-point-two dash thirty-seven eleven dot A dot three, discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held real property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body.
Motion by Supervisor Miles, second by Supervisor Davis, that we are going into executive session in the code that was presented. Are there any questions? All in favor? Yeah, let's round this out, bitch.
Got it, Joe.
All right, we need to go to the executive session. All right, we need to go into the second session.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that the Board of Supervisors return to regular session and certify that to the best of each board member's knowledge. Only business matters related to the codes of which the executive meeting was convened was discussed or considered in the executive closed session, sir.
The motion is seconded. We go back in the open section and nothing was discussed but what identified in the motion. Are there any questions? All in favor? Seven yes. Anything else need be brought before the board?
Could we address what this lady talked about earlier? Can we ask Card about that?
About what?
About getting paid, her not... Is that... Is she paid from the county?
I thought she got paid.
It's been completed, yes.
So that's straight now?
Yes.
Okay.
So you satisfied, ma'am? Oh, I don't know, but they... They're telling them that, okay.
Alright, let's...
I'm glad you had...
That's an Electoral Board question. That's not really a Board of Supervisors. We don't do the hiring and firing with the Electoral Board.
We got the same problem getting next year then?
Exactly.
Right. I can work. Yeah, then you said the same. Don't have to go back to the same.
...and cause a million people. Talking about one person. And if there's other people like me who...
Mr. Chairman, could we ask Mr. Card to address that?
Yes.
Okay, fetal monitor.
So I think the question that's coming up I've heard mentioned several times is the difference between a independent contractor and accounting employee. We've used this theory for years and auditors agree with it.
Auditors? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Auditors that audit our books. So the difference we use and this is pretty common language that if you're an independent contractor, you come and complete work on your own time. So like if you were getting a pool put in, Mr. Miles, we tell you to put a pool in, the contractor comes and goes and gets that pool put in during their time schedule. Because as a county employee, we determine your schedule. If we say we need you on November 10th at eight o'clock, then you're a county employee. And that's why we do all the rec people, do the soccer games and officiating because we're telling them we need you at a certain time and a certain date. So that makes them fall as a county employee. I think Ms. Morales is saying that, you know, she only works that one day. She's not a county employee. But our rules say if we determine what time we need you, you are a county employee. And that's the rule we've used for years and that's what everybody seems to accept. So...
I get no... No stretch of the imagination.
What? You don't get...
We just... We... We're just going round and round in a circle. Rules is rules. I'm glad to meet in the game.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.